Good evening and welcome to the podcast. Listen, this is your first time. With us, please hit that like button, hit that notification bell so that you are notified every time we go live. On this channel tonight, we're going to talk about a case that has been dominating the headlines. And I didn't jump on this case right when it came out because I wanted to do some real research in it because this, this is something that's near and dear to my heart, right? Because I love politics and I love you know, the business of politics. And this is one of them cases that a lot of the naysayers, people who, you know, say, man, I don't want to deal with policy, politics, because it's all corrupt. This is one of them cases where those people can point to and say, hey, look, this is why, um, you know, overall, the overall feeling for, you know, public officials and government is, you know, at an all time low because of corruption. Now, this case right here is involving these three gentlemen right here who are city councilmen for the second largest city in the state of South Carolina, which is North Charleston, South Carolina. And we're going to do a little deep dive on this thing now. The individuals involved in this, who you're looking at on the screen here, and I'm gonna go between the different ones is, but this is involving three city councilmen by the name of Jerome Hayward, Sandino Moses and Mike Brown. Okay? And they are all, they were charged alongside five other people who will get into some of, you know, what these people did and what they're accused of. Okay? In some of the more, just to get to be a little bit more specific now, this guy right here seems to be the ringleader right here, Mr. Jerome. His name is Jerome Hayward, right? And Jerome Hayward is, you see some of the charges that he's, he just recently pled guilty the other day in federal court. When I get into the specifics of what he did, you'll see why it was, he had no choice but to plead guilty. Like these, these guys weren't the most sophisticated criminals. And I, my, my bigger question is, what does this do for the folks in North, North Charleston? You know? What does this do for that? Okay. And so you can see here, uh, some of the charges allegedly, well, not allegedly, this stuff is not alleged anymore because he's pled guilty to it, but he received $40,000 in kickbacks from, from two different nonprofit organizations in exchange for directing portion of a 1.3 million dollar gun violence reduction grant to them. Okay, now that's the really thick side of it is that, you know, if you know anything about Charleston, North Charleston, to be exact, gun violence is a huge problem. And to think that, you know, you had these politicians who had their pockets full of it. You get into the specifics, specifics, what each, you know, what these schemes were that these guys got into. Here, but again, this is Mr. Jerome Hayward. Okay. And the next guy up is this gentleman right here. Who is? That is Mr. Mike Brown and Ms. Mike Brown is accused of bribery, excuse me, bribes to facilitate, to facilitate a rezoning of land along Ashley River for a boat manufacturing company. Recorded conversations revealed Brown expressing frustration over delays in receiving payment, citing personal financial obligations. The rezoning proposal was ultimately rejected. So, he put himself in a position to enrich himself. And again, we're going to get into the specifics of the scheme that these people got involved in. And before long. And then the third of these three gentlemen, these three city councilmen is this man right here. Okay. And you've noticed he's only charged with one felony, which is Miss Pris- Miss Prision lying to the federal authorities. And then we're going to get into the specifics of what it is he lied about and why it is he lied. Again, two of these gentlemen have already pled guilty in federal court as one of them. Plus, along with some of the other folks who pled guilty, guilty pleas for Hayward and Moses who were indicted on these, those guys pled guilty. Hayward and Moses also resigned from the city council. And the third guy who I just had up there, I think. Yeah, that's, um, Sedino, Sandino Moses, that's, this is this guy, his name. And again, he, um, he accepted some money to support a rezoning initiative and later he returned that money. And he was charged with lying to federal investigators about his knowledge of his colleagues' involvement in the scheme. Okay, both Hayward and Moses, which is this guy right here, and the first guy that I showed you right here, they resigned and the other gentleman who did not resign, who did not plead guilty yet. Right here, Mike Brown was removed by Governor McMasters from his position at North Charleston, North Charleston City Council. All right. So let's get into a little bit more detail into what it is that these gentlemen did. All right. And we're going to get into these schemes that they, that they got, got into. And the first one I'm going to talk about is involving this man right here, which Hayward, Hayward, again, he's the ringleader and he's involved in most of it. You know, he was like the, the the boss. For lack of a better term. All right. Federal documents show that Hayward approached a North Charleston businessman in October 2023, who had been advocating for certain changes in the city that would benefit his operations. So basically this businessman was trying to get some rezoning done. Something changed in his favor, in his business favor, so he could, and it would benefit him. Hayward asked the businessman for financial support for his reelection campaign, and the man lawfully donated to Hayward and for other candidates' campaign. So it won't be hard to figure out this, who that person is. Just gotta go back and find the records of Hayward's campaign donations. Soon after, he would met, soon after Hayward met with the business person, the business person, businessman in person, he expressed his willingness to consult and lobby for the changes the man sought. Hayward runs J S Hayward Consulting LLC outside of his city council duties. That should be a conflict of interest right there. So he has, he runs a consulting firm and he's offering, he's soliciting the businessman, letting him know that, hey, listen, this company that I've run could, you know, help you get this done. Following the meeting Hayward, Hayward assistant emailed the businessman a consulting agreement, slick, stating that, that the businessman must pay $10,000, pay a $10,000 fee upfront and a $75 hundred dollar monthly for 12 months in exchange for Hayward's lobbying and consulting services, documents explain. So let's see what that number is right there. That is, I think we came up with a number today. So he asked, he told him, he, he, he basically sent the man, not basically, but he sent the man an invoice saying that if you want my help in make, getting these changes brought about, you hire my consulting firm to help you make this happen, right? And so he's saying to the businessman, you need to give me $10,000 upfront. Okay? It's 10 smacks upfront. I'm looking for a calculator, guys, unless somebody's over there can help me out with this math a little faster. So you're talking about 10 grand upfront. And $7,500 times 12. A hundred grand. So that's what he wanted to be helped. Also, in the agreement, Hayward agreed to lobby and consult with the state and local governments on behalf of the businessman. So he's going to use his influence as a politician to help this man, this businessman. After receiving the agreement, the businessman reported the interaction to the FBI and agreed to cooperate with the investigators, which included the agency recording telephone calls and in-person meetings between the man and Hayward. Hayward, who is on the screen right now. North Charleston City Councilman. Former North Charleston City Councilman, I should say. He was trying to extort the man for a hundred thousand. So the man went to the FBI and using the FBI, using funds that using FBI funds, the businessman transferred money into Hayward's on two separate occasions. The businessman met with Hayward after notifying the FBI, that's the part I missed, I'm sorry, in the meeting, it would assure the man that he had significant influence and control over fellows, fellow city council members and would be able to push through the changes. Using the FBI's funds, the businessman transferred money to Hayward on two separate occasions. On March 11th, 2024, the man transferred $15,000 via wire transfer consisting of the $10,000 upfront and a $5,000 monthly fee, which was negotiated. Officials explained, meaning that, because remember Hayward said he wanted 75,000. And so they knocked off 2,500 and, and the monthly payment was agreed at, at $5,000. On April 5th, 2024, excuse me, yeah. In April 5th, 2024, the man transferred an additional $5,000 to Hayward. During this time, he would participated in numerous meetings and calls with North Charleston City employees, pushing for the changes the businessman sought, which included rezoning the businessman property, issuing business license and potential property swaps. While advocating for the businessman and while, while advocating for the businessman wants, he would never disclose his deal with the businessman to his personal financial or his personal financial interest. And scheme number two, in 2023 Charleston County Parks and Recreation Commission granted Sea Fox Boats a 90-year lease that would allow Sea Fox to build a boat manufacturing facility, clean up the property and pay for a 46-acre public park at the Baker Hospital site. North Charleston Council, North Charleston City Council rezoned the property in April 2023, halting Sea Fox's plans. Sea Fox then asked the city council to reconsider the rezoning in February 2024. The company anticipated public opposition to their plans and hired consultants and lobbyists to push their case. One of the consultants identified as Hicks agreed to pay Hayward and Brown kickbacks from the consulting fees in exchange for their influence on council. The FBI intercepted wiretaps, wire and electronic communications over Hayward's phone. The FBI learned that Hicks paid both Hayward and Brown before an April 18th Public Safety Committee meeting. Despite pressuring members to pass the rezoning, Sea Fox could not gain sufficient support and the company withdrew the rezoning application. This is how it's going down in North Charleston. So now let's talk about scheme number three. The North Charleston Gun Violence Reduction Grant Program was approved. The North Charleston Gun Violence Reduction Grant Program was approved in December 2022. It awarded $100,000 to a dozen local nonprofit organizations that work to combat gun violence in the community totaling 1.2 million dollars. One of the nonprofits that received the funds was formed by Hayward's personal assistant, Michelle Stent Hilton and the other by Donovan Laval Moten, who is known to Hayward. Stenton, Stenton Hilton and Moten agreed to pay Hayward 20% kickback on money they received in exchange for his support. The group used Lorenzo, Lorenzo Financial, run by Rose Lorenzo to launder the money. Hayward received $40,000 in kickback from the scheme. Overall, Hayward faces a maximum term in, of imprisonment of 20 years, a fine of $500,000 and a term of supervised release. A term of supervised release of three years, the Department of Justice said. He has agreed to, he has agreed to cooperate with authorities and that's involving Hayward. Mike Brown is charged with conspiracy to commit bribery, bribery and and wire fraud for his role in a scheme involving rezoning the former Baker Hospital site. Brown is set to be arraigned, be arraigned in March for his charges. The charges against him, Governor Henry McMaster's office has suspended Brown from his position since he has not resigned. According to a federal indictment, Brown conspired with fellow councilman Hayward to receive kickbacks from a consultant identified as Hicks hired by Sea Fox Boats to push the rezoning of the Baker Hospital site. So Sea Fox could proceed with building a boat manufacturing facility at the site despite heavy public opposition. On April 16th, the FBI received authorization to tap Hayward's phone. In one conversation recorded with Brown, Brown is heard saying, S H I T, this free money. About the money the men expected to receive from Hicks in exchange for their support on the rezoning. The indictments state that Brown planned to use the money to help his son with his wedding expenses. Hicks paid him at least $1,000 in cash before April 18th Public Safety Meeting. He faces a maximum term of imprisonment of 20 years, a $250,000 fine, a term of three years supervised release, the Department of Justice said. Sandino Moss has agreed to plead guilty on one count of Miss Prision. It's pris- it looks like Miss Prison, but that's not prison. M I, let's see, let me just get him up on the screen here. That word right there. But what it essentially means is lying to the police, lying to the federal, lying to federal authorities. And so Sandino Moss has agreed to plead guilty on, to one count of of a felony, meaning he concealed his knowledge of a federal crime. Moses turned in a letter of resignation Wendy, Wednesday. While Hayward and Brown were scheming to rezone the Baker Hospital site, they used their influence to attempt to persuade fellow council members to approve the rezoning vote. Now, look how they set this guy here. Or allegedly set him up during April, during the April 18th Public Safety Meeting, Moses motioned to the table a vote on the first reading of a, of rezoning the hospital site, which caused a 30-day delay in considering the rezoning application. Following the vote, the first reading was rescheduled to be taken up at a meeting scheduled for May 16th, 2024. On April 16th, 2020, on April 26th, 2024, a businessman could convene a meeting with Fields, Hicks and several other Sea Fox employees at a Sea Fox has headquarters downtown Charleston to create a plan to win support for the Sea Fox rezoning proposal. That meeting was recorded and handed over to the FBI. In it, Hicks and Fields stated state that gaining Moses's support for the rezoning was key to this, to the success of, excuse me, for the May, May 16th rezoning. Fields then scheduled meetings with Moses to discuss the Sea Fox proposal. During the meeting, Moses told Fields he wanted to start a consulting career. I guess that's the thing. When you get into them positions, you can't take money from people directly. So you start a consulting firm and then, you know, that's where it gets murky at. Fields then asked Moses if he would be interested in helping him with, with a project that involved an effort to help local churches facing property dispute. Federal documents state, Moses said yes, and Fields handed him $200 in cash and said he would give him details later. The pair arranged another meeting during which Fields paid Moses another 250 in cash. Moses pressed for more, more details about the consulting project previously discussed, but Fields offered no further information. The FBI recorded a later conversation between Moses and Hayward in which Moses said if, that if Fields wanted his support for the rezone, Fields needed to make something happen and give me some money for my district. Documents explained. So that's, that's key. He said he needed to make something happen and give me money, some money for my district. You better be glad he put that my district part in there because his charges would have been a little bit more. He would then come, Hayward then counseled Moses. Hayward then counseled Moses that, okay. So Hayward, again, the, the bald head guy, the big OG, he counseled Moses that asking outright for something in exchange for a vote was illegal in that he should instead vote in favor of Sea Fox, Sea Fox's proposal. After the conversation which Moses met with Fields once again and returned the cash that he gave him, recognizing it was a bribe. So yeah, they went at, they went at buddy kind of backhanded, not kinda, but they went at him very backhandedly. And Moses never notified authorities, authorities about the situation. So I guess Moses said quiet is kept. About a month later, the FBI agent approached Fields, asking if he knew of payments made on behalf of Sea Fox for the rezoning application. Field said no, then sent Moses a message in an attempt to cover up the bribe payments. He, Moses, who I'm talking about now, he faces a maximum term of imprisonment of three years. $250,000 fine and a maximum term of supervisor release to one year. So Moses is taking that deal and running with it. Okay. And here's what the mayor of North Charleston's response was to all of this up to this point, I guess. North Charleston Mayor Reggie Burgess released a statement shortly after Wednesday's announcement extended his gratitude to the FBI and State Law Enforcement Division for their thorough and diligent work throughout the investigation. From the onset, the city was fully cooperated, the city has fully cooperated with this inquiry, embracing the opportunity to ensure the continued trust and confidence of our community. Transparency and accountability remain core principles of this administration. And we welcomed this review as a necessary step to uphold those standards, said Burgess. We appreciate the community's patience and support during this process and assure you that our focus remains and always on building a safer and brighter future for North Charleston. So, yeah, this is a very interesting story. And again, brings in, it brings up a lot of questions about, you know, public trust and, and, and politicians. And to me, it highlights how easy it is to get sucked into, you know, that position of power. Get sucked up by that position of power. If you don't watch yourself, you know what I mean? The one or two carefully placed. carefully placed ca- campaign contributions or carefully placed donations could really put you in a pickle if you're, you know, a new politician not understanding the long game that some of these people play, you know what I mean? So main thing is don't get caught up by greed if that's your motivation for um doing that. If you're getting into politics to make money, you're um, there's a very good chance you're gonna end up behind a bar somewhere. Like these uh three gentlemen right here. So, don't know, man. Y'all get in the comment section, tell me what you think, tell me what you know. Yeah, I, I'm gonna be on this a little bit more because I have some really good inside information, especially about some of those guys who were making those five oh one Cs and getting paid, you know, on the backs of the gun violence, you know what I mean? Literally taking advantage of a situation. I mean, literally taking advantage of a situation. So again, get in the comment section. Tell me what you think. Does this erode your faith in public officials? Ability to do the right thing when they got the power?